Good. All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Tuesday, November 9th. I call it to order, and there are no alternates to appoint this evening. But I will have roll call, starting on the left.
Sean Peterson. Charlie.
Charlotte Stradens.
Brian Schiller.
Brian Roy.
Marion Channati.
Katie.
So we're starting with public hearing. Z 2021, 2104 of RMD Land Development LLC requesting special permit for elderly housing project. Fifty-two one-bedroom units on property located on Tarbox Road, Plainfield, map 10, block 14A, lot 47, RA 60 zoning district. And do we have someone speaking for the development?
Trying to set this up so everyone can see. Kind of far back. And this.
Yep.
Will reach. Hey. Good evening. My name's Ella Bartlett. I'm with CLA Engineers, and I've represented the applicant. I was here two months ago when we opened the public hearing. And I took a lot of notes. We went back, we did some revisions to the plans to try to address the concerns that were raised at the last meeting. Let's see. The first thing we did was, just before that meeting, there'd been a pretty good-sized storm that actually exceeded the 100-year storm in a lot of areas. So the question was asked, I had designed this for the 100-year storm. How will it hold up if we get a bigger storm? So I went back and did the calculations for the 500-year storm. I found out basin number three was big enough to handle the 500-year storm as is. Basin one needed to be enlarged in order to handle the capacity of the 500-year storm and show no increase in flows. So we revised the plans, we did the calculations, we submitted it to your consulting engineer. I don't think Chuck's here tonight, but he reviewed them and gave a letter confirming to us that, as designed, there'll be no peak increases in a 500-year storm. So that was the first thing we did. One of the other concerns that came up is, on the entrance drive coming into the project from the north, we had proposed a six-foot-high vinyl white line fence. And we were asked if we could also do some landscaping. So what we did was, we oriented the 24-foot-wide drive in the center of the 50-foot driveway that we have. So we had 13 feet on both sides of the driveway. So there was room to do a fence and a, we did a road of arborvitus on both sides. So that's what we've shown on the revised plans. So that would be on sheet 11. Another concern I heard at the meeting was that we didn't provide as much buffer above basin three as we did above some of the housing. So I went back and increased the natural buffer, leaving 25 feet of untouched vegetation, because there's quite a bit of vegetation along there now. And then we added spruce in front of the existing vegetation so that there'd be more of a buffer in that area. Concerns were raised about dust during construction. So on sheet 12, we added a dust suppression plan specifying that all stockpiles be low and seated with temporary ride decks. That'll grow fast. It won't last for years, but it'll stabilize the temporary stockpile right away. We called out for a water truck to be on-site during all excavation to keep the loose soils wet, control the dust. And then we also specified that, as the project proceeds, each area that has stabilized, be low and seated immediately. There's 13 buildings proposed. They won't be built all at once. So as we build buildings, we stabilize it and move on and start working on the next one. So we won't have the whole area open at once. We were asked to add street addresses for all the butters. So on sheet one, something down.
Excuse me?
Sheet one for all the butters. We called out the last name of the property owner and the street address. So it's easy to orient who lives where. That was one of the things that was requested. We were asked what the hours of operation would be during construction. And what they're proposing is Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to noon. Commission can change that if they feel that that's not appropriate, but that's our first proposal. At the meeting, concerns were raised about traffic impacts from the project. As a result, we hired a traffic engineer, Sean Kelly, from Vines Associates. He's here tonight to tell you what he found when he did a traffic. Took a look at the traffic from the site.
Thank you all. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Sean Kelly, the traffic engineer with Vines Associates, behalf of the project team, and the members of the audience that have us here tonight. As Ella pointed out, we were retained by the developer to take a look at the anticipated traffic impacts associated with this project in terms of the number of trips that would be generated over a daily and a peak hour basis, and how that traffic volume compares to the existing traffic flows that are likely to be accommodated in the traffic flow of the project. As pointed out, the project entails the construction of 13 separate residential buildings. Each one would have four residential units. Each unit would be a one-bedroom unit, and they would all be restricted. In terms of identifying the traffic impacts of the project, we rely on data that's published by what's known as the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's the federal database. Essentially, what it is, is it's a, it's a database of curatorial data collected at various land use codes throughout the United States. And they have data for everything from office space to residential developments to shopping centers, commercial projects. For this particular project, the most applicable data is what's on this land use code 252, which is senior housing, restricted housing. And what the data shows is that, when you get restricted housing, typically you see a lot less traffic generated than typical standard apartment rooms. And the reasons are twofold. First, as people are older, typically they have, people are working less, they may not work in traditional hours, they may work less hours, or they don't go in for typical nine to five. And secondly, these units are typically smaller. As pointed out, all of these units are one-bedroom units. We don't anticipate having any children, there won't be any trips associated with school traffic, school buses, things of that nature. What the ITE data says is that, for a project of this type, 52 units, typically on a weekday daily, you have 192 trips. That would be 96 trips in, 96 trips out. In terms of your P-barrel traffic, typically in the morning, you have about 10 trips during the busiest hour, evening 14 trips during the busiest hour. The question always comes up, you know, how come 52 units only have 10 trips? And it's important to point out that this is just one hour. So for instance, if the busiest hour of the quarter out there was clean tonight in the morning, you know, that certainly means we can see those 10 trips. That's not to say you won't see other trips between the hours of seven and eight, or even between the hours of six and seven, depending on where someone may work, or even nine to 10, or outside those hours. But during the busy commuter hours, those are the trips you're looking at, about 10 in the morning, about 14 in the evening. So it's basically, you know, one trip every six minutes in the morning, and then one trip every, as I work up to four minutes in the evening. We understand that this development could be a much more dense development. It certainly isn't, you know, developed up to maximum. You know, so we understand that there are 35 acres, and about 32 of them are developable. And the town bylaw allows up to five residential bedrooms per acre. So if this development were built up to its fullest, you know, maximum density, you'd be looking at about 160 units versus the 52 that are currently proposed, which would be about 592 trips, and then, you know, 32 to 42 trips during the peak hours. So in comparison to what's allowed by Rite, this project is actually about 400 trips lower than what could be developed. And then during the peak hours, anywhere from 22 to 28 trips lower. But again, it's important to point out that what's being proposed, again, it's about a trip every, you know, four to six minutes during the busiest hours of road rage traffic. We expect the bulk of the traffic will come out and make their way around towards Route 12. It seems to be the most convenient route to get to Interstate 395. Took a look at what the volumes are out there in 12, approximately to the site. Quite frankly, there's about 7,000 vehicles per day. And then during peak hours, it ranges anywhere from, you know, 350 to 400 per hour, up to 600 per hour during the busier evening peak. So, you know, we're going to be adding, you know, 10 to 14 trips to a quarter that carries, you know, anywhere from 400 to 600. So quite frankly, the increase is what we would consider a daily fluctuation. We go out there any given day, the volume's going to vary by that much. So it's not a, it's not a notable increase in traffic, and certainly not something that the average motorist on, you know, heading up to a commuter route would get. And I think that's really, you know, the gist of our study. Again, this is all based on federal guidelines in terms of the trip generation. These are the standards that's required by the Connecticut Department of Transportation. You know, at the end of the day, we're still looking at a very modest increase, mainly because of the fact that these are all one-bedroom units and they are restricted. That's all I really have for tonight. We'd be happy to answer any questions from members of the Commission or the audience at the, thank you.
Were there any other items revised that you'll be reviewing?
Do you want to talk to my ideas on biochemicals?
Okay, thank you.
I don't know what to say.
Members of the Commission, good evening. My name is Bob Russo. I'm a certified soil scientist, certified professional in sedimentation erosion control, and a biologist with CLA Engineers in Norbent, Connecticut. Ella Bartlett asked me to come along to talk to you about the progress of the study for threatened endangered species on the site, but she indicated there were some concerns expressed at last month's meeting. And I just want to review quickly what's been done so far and where things are going, and, you know, what Connecticut DEP has told us so far. As the Commission knows, I'm sure, in this part of Plainfield, in the past, eastern spade foot toad has been encountered, as well as some other listed species. In order to get a permit from Connecticut DEP for de-watering stormwater from construction, coordination has to be undertaken when threatened endangered species are found on the site, or when there's some indication in the natural diversity database that they may be present on the site. So a couple months ago, we sent off the coordination information to Connecticut DEP, and they requested that the applicant hire an expert in those types of wildlife species, eastern spade foot toad, blue spotted salamander, to look at the site for potential habitat. And during the summer and late fall, that study was underway. A herpetologist that's very familiar with eastern spade foot toad, that has done work here in Plainfield before, and has ongoing work in a number of sites throughout the state, went out to the site at night, on rainy nights, to survey for eastern spade foot toad. And what's important is that this herpetologist, Dennis Quinn, has other reference sites throughout the state. So he knows on a given night if the toads are out. And he's completed the field work for eastern spade foot toad out here and didn't find any on this site. And we know that's a good observation because on those same nights on other sites here in Eastern Connecticut, he did find them. So what he's indicated at this point is that he's not concerned about presence of eastern spade foot toad or their habitat on the site. He is, at this point, preparing his report to go to Connecticut DEP to describe his findings. I would like to indicate just a couple things about the site that are of interest in terms of habitat. There are probably people here from town who remember when this site was a drive-in theater. If you look at the 1965 aerial photo of the site, most of the area that's proposed for residential development on this site was actually a drive-in theater and was, had a lot of pavement on it. The, I just want to put up a figure, or pass out a figure for the Commission to see. Yep. Thanks. I'm going to pause just a moment while the rest of the map gets passed out. Thank you. So I would just like to indicate on the plan that the Commission just received that the aerial photo that is the backdrop for this is available online from UConn's website. It's a 1965 aerial photo. And now, in the center of the drawing, we've superimposed the area of residential development on this 1965 aerial photo. And then if you follow the proposed entrance road in, which was the entrance and exit to the drive-in, you'll see that the area I'm outlining now, which is kind of the shape of a small infield, has this pattern of rows where you would park your car to drive in at a projection house. So that the vast majority of that area, the soil has been disturbed in the past, paved in the past. And because the species of concern, blue spotted salamander and eastern spade foot toad are what's called fossilial, they live most of the time underground, this is not really the area that would be habitat for them. And then consulting with Dennis Quinn, the herpetologist, over the past couple days, that's his feeling as well. So in terms of the potential for species out here, the herpetologist has done a survey. He didn't find either of the species out here. They'll be sending his report into Connecticut DEP and also concludes that the area of residential development is not something that would be suitable habitat for those species. Now, this is not to say that Connecticut DEP has signed off on this, but it's important to know that Connecticut DEP does have the final authority on this. And if you look at the general stormwater permit, the language in Appendix A, which concerns threatened endangered species, says that the applicant has to, must meet DEP's standards if they believe there's a species there and develop a suitable mitigation plan, or they won't get a permit. I understand the Commission may be concerned because, as of now, this is not finalized. And I'd just like to indicate that we have other examples. For instance, recently in the town of Waterford, we were in the same timeframe and same situation. And we asked the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission if they would go ahead and move along with the procedure, close the public hearing, and allow us to provide them with the final letter from DEP that indicated that the special, any special concern, threatened or endangered species mitigation had been met. The Commission in Waterford and the environmental planner agreed that that was a sound way to proceed, and that's what we'd like to ask the Commission to do tonight. In other words, as Ella Bartlett indicated, we feel that we've addressed all the technical aspects that are before planning and zoning. And what I'm indicating now is that DEP really has the final say with regard to protection of the species, and we have to meet it, otherwise the applicant cannot proceed and build. And we would just request that the Commission, if they see fit, go ahead and close the public hearing after tonight. And if you wish to provide a condition that the approval from Connecticut DEP come back to you as proof that we've met the concerns for threatened endangered species, we feel that that would be a very reasonable way to proceed. Again, as our previous presenters have indicated, I'd be happy to answer any questions for the Commission. And I think, as is typical during these public hearings, we'd like to reserve the right to answer any questions, rebut any other information that comes into the record at the end of the public hearing. Thank you.
Maybe I didn't hear, but what is the timeframe for the condition from DEP coming back?
From, coming back from DEP?
Yeah.
I wish I could predict how fast things will come back from DEP. Based on our past experience, for example, the site in the water for one to two months from now, the turnaround is not crazy rapid, but it's not, you know, extended beyond a month or two. The study, I just pointed out that the place in the timeline where we are is that the herpetologist has completed the study and is writing up the findings. And within the next week, it'll be submitted to DEP. Once that submittal is made, a month or two should do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question regarding this application, if you could please step up to the microphone with your name and your comment. If there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question on this application.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. My name is Paul Sweet, 260 New Road, Plainfield, Connecticut. I, when I first read this proposal in the legal notices, as you know, when I was in government, there were different things that came along that people wanted to do out there, and none of them ever made a whole lot of sense, and financing, and questioning about who was doing the proposing, and things like that. When I saw this proposal, and what was actually being proposed, I felt like, wow, that's, if these people are reputable, this is going to be a good thing. Because simply put, our generation is getting older, and we need housing. I can think of four units in our, four projects in our town, but be it as it may, this getting older thing is not a joke. People, people now are having trouble with their limits on how they can walk and climb in the traditional mill housing and apartments that we've come to know. And to be perfectly candid, we do, you know, when you're younger, things work well. But I will tell you all, and I'm on my other side of 60 now, on the late side of 60, that the body starts doing strange things, and you're not as strong as you once were. And this is going to be a handicap facility for 52 units. I can remember when Parkway was there. I actually saw Snow White and Seven Dwarfs there when I was a kid. And the Beatles, Hold On, not Hold On, Hot Days Work, The Night, whatever it was. And I had great memories when it was, when it was Parkway Theater. But now, this proposal for, for the elderly and the one-bedroom thing, that's all I can say, is go up to Westview Village on Broad Street. Maybe it's too late for that, but I had an opportunity to go to a dedication there a couple weeks ago. And what a wonderful facility. And I couldn't help it, first time I seen that plant. It's almost the same idea as that Westview Village. And we had this dedication, and all the folks come out, and they were so happy, that community lived in, and, you know, they all became friends and things like that. So, you know, I would put this on my property, but you wouldn't, don't put it on my property. Okay? So the fact of the matter is, the folks have a right to bring a proposal before you. And if they met all your allegations, and we all know from my time in the town, that we spent thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars for frogs and salamanders and crazy things like this. And I have nothing against these animals, but we studied plants, mosquitoes, we studied everything. We spent a lot of money to put, we had Walmart on the hook, but it ended up being a Lowe's. And, and all around that whole area, there've been so many studies done because of gravel operations that are going on. I haven't seen anything in great volume when it comes to frogs, or salamanders, or any of those types of things. I just haven't witnessed it. So I just want you to know that, you know, when your wasky landfill was open, you had hundreds of trips over those roads when that landfill was open. This is nothing. This is, this is not even comparable to what it was when that landfill was open. I'm, I want to speak as specific to the need of that generation. And this would be a feather in the town of Plainfield's cap to do this and approve this project. I have no interest as far as financial or anything in this project at all, but I believe in it. Because our generation's getting older, and we're going to need quality housing, affordable type housing for our senior people. It's an ideal project, and I hope you all would consider that because it's a need. It's a need for our people, and obviously you will get folks from outside of town, but, you know, I don't know what the preferences are. But I can tell you this much, there are waiting lists in all the four projects I mentioned. Okay? So I, the minute I read it, I was for it, and I stand for it tonight, and I hope you guys will consider it. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public on this application or questions? Any comments, questions, or?
Sue Paul, Westview Village. I have a question of the people that are presenting. What's the zoning for this project? What was the zoning?
So this is an RA 60 zoning district, and elderly housing is permissible under special permit process, which is the process they're going through right now.
Another question, is this being funded by any government funds for the elderly? Because it was a survey in the town of Plainfield two summers ago about what kind of housing we needed in the Plainfield. And I do know that there are other towns around that are getting funding, the people that are building the projects are getting funded for, I mean, they're getting paid money from the state and the federal government for building elderly housing. Now, we definitely need elderly housing in the town of Plainfield, but I don't feel that this is an ideal, high-end development for our elderly. Would you live there? Would you live there? Okay. Most people-
Not a question unanswered, so thank you.
Most people that-
Thank you. Do rest your coffee.
That you're talking about have respiratory problems, and that's breathing problems. So you have a wood burning plant that has emissions-
So we, we have to keep the comments related to the application before us. So if there's issues with other developments around, then those issues have to be filed with the zoning office.
Those people living there will be sitting outside on the deck, and they will be breathing in whatever is coming out of the wood burning plant. They will be breathing in emissions from trucks, the train. There is a welding company about 500 feet down the road from there. And I think you realize that's falling reality, this selling three lots on the quarter of Route 12 and the main road going into Lowe's. And they are, they are commercial. So when you were talking about transportation figures, they will be skewed by the kind of development that are put in on those three lots.
So once again, we have to base the application on the circumstances as they are now, not what possible future may be in its surroundings, because none of us have that crystal ball. So while I understand your concern, we really have to deal with the application in front of us and the circumstances as they are. So while I appreciate your concern for future, absolutely. So if and when those other developments come along, that would be the time to address those other developments.
I'm just making you aware of that because things will change around this development. Leaves fall off of trees. So you might be putting six-feet-high fences or 12-feet-high, they are still going to see in that direction north of it, they're going to see the stacks from the wood burning. If you've ever driven by there at night, it's quite entertaining and kind of scary to see that with what's coming out of that. Plus, you have all the lighting in that area, too. You've got to remember vibrations, the rumbling of the train. You gotta remember vibrations, the rumbling of the train and the trucks that are going. I, I cannot, there are other places in the town of Plainfield that would be much better for elderly housing. We need elderly housing, but this is not the place to put it.
Thank you.
Okay, I have two questions. The first one, Paul brought it up, was handicap, are all the units handicapped?
Could you address if all the units are handicap accessible?
If you're familiar with the site, it is dead flat. Everyone in the unit should be capable of being handicapped accessible. Right now, it'll probably be built up from one step, just water and everything, but it's easily created, couldn't be handicapped accessible. Because the whole site is flat, it's flat, we make it one percent all the way around on the road. Jumping and down, but just to get water to flow. It's a perfect site for seeing housing because of, there is no, there are no streetlights, there's no five percent. It's one percent everywhere.
Thank you.
I ask, is Cross, Cross Creek down here? They have some that has there, so I was wondering. And the other question was, are any of these units gonna be considered affordable housing? That's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
No, they're not gonna be affordable. Whatever the market is, whatever's in, in the handicap areas.
Any other comments or questions from the audience?
June Gagney.
I just wanna say that you have to eat this microphone, because we can't hear you back there. So, I just want you to know.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions from audience members? Comments or questions from board members? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing. I have a motion from Roz to close the public hearing. Second by Sean, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item B, Z two thousand twenty-one, twenty-one seventy-two, Town of Plainfield planning a zoning commission requesting a text amendment to section nineteen point three point eight of zoning regulations pertaining to lighting. Would you present that, Ryan?
I can do that.
Thank you.
So, a few months back-
And please use the microphone if you can't project to the back of the room.
I will try to project.
Thank you.
Everybody here?
Yes.
Okay. So, a few months back, the commission came to realize that there were some deficiencies in our regulations pertaining to site lighting. And so, we have presented a text amendment to address those deficiencies. So, for lighting, the existing text is to be striped or to be struck, and post-text is to read light lighting. Any exterior lighting shall be arranged and designed so that the lighting will not adversely affect the nearby properties or the public road. All lighting shall be utilized full cutoff fixtures. Maximum pipe of lighting fixtures shall be twenty feet. The lighting plan with a lighting diagram accurate to one tenth of a foot handle shall be provided with a site plan or new application. Plan shall detail the types of lighting, lighting fixtures, and show projection areas. And then, by request of the first selectmen, looking down the road at possible town development for athletic facilities and whatnot, we also included athletic recreational lighting, which is allowed, which would be allowed by special permit. The purpose of this regulation is to allow for adequate lighting of sports fields and recreational facilities. Lighting shall be designed in a manner that will minimize impact to dark skies and adjacent properties. Lighting fixtures shall be specifically mounted and aimed so that their beams will fall within the primary playing or recreational area and within the lighting specifications for safe playing for planned athletic events. So, typically, an engineer would actually design athletic facilities with lighting to, to meet specific standards for the sports. Direct illumination shall be confined to within the property lines of recreational use. Full light cutoff fixtures shall be required. The illumination plan shall be submitted, which demonstrates proper lighting, proper lighting installation. The design plan shall include the lighting requirements for each competition area applicable and the specifications and technical measures showing how those requirements will be achieved. Special tree planting and/or buffering to assist in light control and protection of adjacent properties and roadways be required by the regulations. The lighting plan shall be prepared by lighting professional and contained in the following. One, photometric diagrams showing predicted, uh, sorry, predicted maintained lighting levels for the closed playing field or court and associated perimeter and area lighting. Two, height, light pole height is measured from grade or surface on which the light pole is mounted to the bottom of the lighting fixture. There are maximum height restrictions, but light pole heights must be shown on a illumination video. Hours of operation, the commission may set hours of operation that are reasonable for use in surrounding area. It is advised that the commission set time for the lights to be turned off by ten thirty P M, unless an event is still in progress, where the light's being turned off once the event has concluded. Lights that are automatic should be set to turn off at times specified by the commission, which is advised to be no later than ten thirty P M. Those are suggestions, the commission will not be bound by that.
So, this is a public hearing, if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question regarding lighting regulation, please step up to the microphone.
Polyote.
Unless you can project to the room.
Yes. Polyote's zoning the room, so I'm just wondering if I can hear that well. Does this affect the residential? Are this encompassing every kind of property in the town of Plainfield?
So, I can understand. So, this would be for anything that comes before the commission for site interview, which is typically commercial, but would also improve what we saw tonight. So, anything that comes before the commission that has that would have to adhere by the standards as far as athletic facilities. Typically, athletic facilities are regulated by the town or owned by the town. So, we don't, you know, I think we have one private, that one facility, which is my experience.
So, it's not gonna impact-
So, not a single family home, tell me?
No, no.
This would not impact a single family home?
Yeah, no, thank you. This is the, thank you, still, come.
Developments, this is for developments, not single family homes.
Okay.
Primarily commercial, industrial.
Or items by special permit that require a site plan review.
Well, suppose you put in like a housing development and there was a single family home on the side of it. There's regulations, so it doesn't impede on the single family residence.
Correct, that's what the cutoff language is about.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I, for Gagney. In the exist, existing text, it talks about no sky globe. Is that the same as down the block impacting just dark skies? And does that just go for the athletic fields? Or is that for projects that it's also no sky globe?
We require full cutoffs for any commercial industrial.
Okay, and that was my second question, what is a full cutoff fixture?
A box type fixture, one where the bulb is not exposed or is not dropped down all over the fixture.
So, it's directed out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the audience on this application? Comments or questions from board members?
Just one thing, I know that they, that there is a misprint in there. So, four number two, height, light pole height is measured from grade or surface on which the light pole is mounted to the bottom of the lighting fixture. It's supposed to say, it's supposed to say there are no maximum height restrictions. Because sometimes athletic lights have to be, you know, pretty high. All depends on the type of service. So, the commission would have expression holder under the lighting.
Madam Chair, one question if I could ask?
Yeah.
Any, did I miss something?
Paul Sweet, 260 New Road. Brian, does this lighting thing have, let's say you have the strip that ride the dog, or whether new business is going? Does that mean the lights will lock, the advertisement strip at certain time?
That portion, that portion's only for athletic field lights, athletic recreation. Let's say, let's just say we want what lights out here around the walk. They would have to come in for a special permit in order to do that.
I'm just looking at business in general, you know, sometimes. I just, I just wanna know what it does to the advertisement.
So, the time restriction is only related to the athletic fields? So, the athletic field lighting would have to be shut off by a certain time? That's separate section than the other.
That'll be up to the commission right back, I presume.
Right. Any other comments or questions from audience? Comments or questions from board members? Okay, so not hearing any additional comment, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing. Motion by John, second by Roz to close the public hearing, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Moving on to public hearing, item C, Z two thousand twenty-one, twenty-one ninety-seven. Howard Haggott requesting a special permit for excavation of eighty-three thousand cubic yards of material to create two ponds and a single family home for property located at zero Lovers Lane, Assessor's Map Eight, Block fifty-three A, one thirty-nine A. And we have someone speaking for the applicant.
Thank you for the record, Norm Tebow, Kelly and Eric Associates. I'm here representing Howard Haggott Tebow. I do have three sets of the, of the plans revised for CHA review that I can give you for the record.
Yep. Let me just critique those right there. Thank you. You can take that with you around here.
Okay, great. So, we have a proposal here, there's a, it's a ten point three acre parcel of land with access from Lovers Lane. There is a, a, a access strip driveway actually owned by the property that comes out of Lovers Lane. And the proposal here, I mean, essentially, it's, it's to create a lot for a single family home. As part of this, the, the owner and the applicant, Mr. Haggott, is proposing to excavate two ponds as part of this. One pond, the pond one is approximately one point six acres. The second pond is approximately two, uh, one point two acres. The ponds will range in depth from sixteen to twenty feet deep. And, I mean, the real, the reason for this ponds is, you know, they, they like to fish. They'd like to have the opportunity to fish on their own property here. So, um-
I like my drinking water.
Hold on, you'll have your opportunity for comment on this application after he presents. So, I will absolutely open the floor to you, but we just need to keep it orderly. So, appreciate your patience.
All right, so this, this property is, is basically surrounded on all sides by ONG Industries. They have a excavation operation pretty much surrounding this property right here. And so, the, and this property has been used historically for gravel excavation. At one point in time, there was gravel actually excavated from this property as well. So, the, the proposed method of excavation, because it's going to be in a closed excavation, would be either a long armed excavator or a, or a dragline. The method of excavation would be the, the gravel would be taken out of the pond areas, stockpiled sites around the perimeter of the pond, or to drain back in toward the ponds. And after the, the material has dried sufficiently, it could be removed from the site. The, they are proposing hours of operation weekdays, Monday through Friday, seven thirty to five P M. No weekends, no weekends, no holidays. And if, if this were to continue for just one continuous year, it could be accomplished in a single year, in a single year. However, Mr. Haggott actually isn't in the state for about six months out of the year. So, typically, in November to April or May or so, there really wouldn't be much activity there. Now, one caveat to that, and is that currently, Mr. Haggott is negotiating with ONG Industries to possibly do the excavation for him and, and take ownership of the material that comes out of here. In that case, the, the proposal, as we have it before you right now, will utilize Lovers Lane to access and address the site. Approximately fifteen truckloads per day, about thirty trips, you know, trip, uh, one trip out, one trip in would be per truckload. That would come out to, for, for the working day, about three, about three trips per hour. If Mr. Haggott is successful in negotiating with ONG Industries, and, and this is something that they're very serious about, there'd be no traffic on Lovers Lane at all because the, the property would be accessed through the, the ONG Industries property. The water elevation here, the final elevation of the pond that we're calling for, is based upon monitoring that we did throughout the site, we had a total of four monitoring wells. What we did note is that it's relatively flat water table with a slight, a slight incline that goes east to west. So, there, there's a little bit of movement from, from east to west on the site based upon the, the elevations that we took. I, I would also note that the, the groundwater elevations that we're taking are very consistent. The only time we saw any attributable increase to those was when we had a significant rate of that. I believe we had, you know, back to back, three, four hour rainfalls over the course of a couple of days. And, and the groundwater elevation rose significantly at that time, but then it dropped back down again to, to, you know, the elevations that are proposed at the pond. We've found also that the, the measurements that we're taking in the monitoring wells really coincide with the existing pond on site. The, the elevation of that existing pond in the northern part of the site that's partially on the ONG Industries property and partially on Mr. Haggott's property do correspond with the groundwater elevations that were, that were measured in the monitoring wells. We do, we, we did address the comments of CHA. We did visit the site with them, and they took a look around and walked the site with us. There weren't, there weren't a whole lot of comments they had on this. This is a relatively simple operation with regard to gravel and material removal. One of the things that they wanted to see with regard to the proposed single family home, is they wanted to see a rain garden to collect the roof for it so that it wouldn't discharge directly to the existing pond on site. We did add that to the plans. One of the other things, they talked about showing groundwater contours to show the direction of the water flow. You really have a difference in elevation from one side of the site to the other of, probably three or four inches. So, to actually show contours really isn't possible unless we're showing them in increments of, you know, point one. So, that was explained to CHA Engineering. They agreed that based upon the monitoring wells and the measurements that we took, it just doesn't seem relevant to produce relevant counters. Since the plan must specify the trade from the excavated stockpile materials must drain to the interior of the site, newly excavated ponds, we have noted that on, on the sheets that is actually noted on sheet number two. For the bottom, we showed the stockpiles. And we noted that position stockpile of excavated materials is drained back toward the excavated area. So it's going to be difficult for both ponds. This is a very flat site. Fortunately, we're, we're able to make that happen based upon the current elevation of the site. The location of the anti-tracking pad must be provided in the site plans. That's shown on sheet number one, the overall plan. There is an anti-tracking pad there currently. It will be, it will be maintained. That would be right there at the, at the start of the driveway. One other thing, general, general note, one on sheet two appears to conflict with construction fueling area labeled on sheet two. Based on this, it appears that fuel may be stored on site. The design engineer wants to clarify this. You did not say fuel be stored on site. We do show a dedicated fueling area for vehicles in excavation. Excavating material, equipment would be going, would go to this particular portion of the site to be fueled, but there will be no bulk storage of fuel on the site. Lastly, the cost estimate for the stabilization of the site must be provided. And we did, we did provide that as well. And I believe it's acceptable as well. So that's really kind of it in a nutshell. This is not a long-term operation. It's not a one and done. Ponds will be excavated, possibly completed, and, and the residents will be built there. And that will be the end. So I'll be happy to answer any questions in the cabin.
This is a public hearing, so if you have a comment or question on the application, if you could step up to the microphone, state your name and your comment or question.
My name is Henry Gustalbi. I live on Lover's Lane. I want to know what happened with all of the contaminated soil that was on that site when it was a junkyard.
Was there any?
Because I was at Wade's Junkyard for 35 years. In 2010, Dave Jarvis and Jane Oakening set a fire down there and DEP went down there and they found numbers of oil tanks cut open and dumped in the ground. And all that material left there, but where did it go? Plus, we have wells on that site.
So in the area of disturbance, is there any environmental issues?
Yes, it was nobody.
Well, we are not aware of any out there. I know that Mr. Haggott has been cleaning the site. There were some areas where they were, he did find car parts, they find tires, and he had those stockpiled here removed from the site. Based upon the movement of material that has occurred on site to this point, we are not aware of any areas that was out there. Actually, we've done the test holes for the health department. I know, you know, definitively, there's nothing in those particular areas that the set system is going to build. And obviously, if, if something like that is encountered during the excavation process, then it needs to be handled accordingly, you know, in accordance with the safety renders and the requirements for hazardous waste disposal. Like I said, based upon the amount of excavation, we went out to screening the fact that it wasn't junkyard. Absolutely was. I think, you know, some of the old aerial photographs show that. It's been substantially cleaned up to this point. And all I can say is going forward, we haven't extensively dug holes out there and done any kind of groundwater monitoring or anything of that nature. But based upon the fact that people have operated wells out there and there's no, there's no current contamination with the wells, we don't anticipate there just being an issue going forward.
Once again, Henry Gustalbi, who's on Channel 3 News about the contaminated soil. To Andy Gonzalez from the state of Connecticut was down there. DEP was down there. Not only that, what about the toads and the frogs in that area as well?
Are there any environmental studies in this area currently?
No, dear honor, environmental studies, it's, it's surrounded by 400 acres of, of excavation project right around there. This, this has all been previously disturbed. If anything, the only potential habitat that might exist here would be that existing pond on the site, which is, and we are staying more than 100 feet away from that with the post house. We're going to need a, a continuous buffer tree line around the pond, so there's no activity in that direction. The rest of the site is currently much of the top sale or been scraped off there and it's stockpiled on the site. It's been disposed down to the subsoil, the gravel layers that is in service at this point. So the areas, I can say definitively where those ponds are, it's bare ground. So to, you know, think that there must be any kind of sort of habitat there for any kind of endanger or protect the species. And the natural diversity in the database does not indicate that there are any species concerned in this particular area.
Question?
There is a French duralite, but they used to use to less.
Correct.
So it's called pond.
Yeah, very, very slightly. Like I said, we have, we have maybe from, from one end of the site to the other, a three or four inch gradient in that direction. Very, very slight. It's a relatively flat water table here.
This is a public hearing. Any other comments or questions from audience members?
Yep, I'm right back. What about an aquifer? That's right underneath that property. They're going to be digging into it.
So the maximum depth on the plan is 150 feet. Is that correct?
Well, the maximum depth of the pond would normally be 16 feet in elevation.
Okay. So the actual depth of the pond is how deep?
16 to 20 feet.
16 to 20?
16 to 20 feet. As people on Lover's Lane, the elevations are 137 feet from where they're going to be digging. Their wells are 150 foot deep. What happens when they get in the aquifer and drain everybody's wells dry? Are they going to put new wells in? Your wells 140?
Correct. The water's there now. Right now, you, right now, you've got water. We, we have very definitive proof of where the water table is there. So if you're going to be removing the gravel in the area where the water table is, the point is just going to be. We're not, we're not excavating deep down if you've got 130 foot well or 150 foot well. We are well over 100 feet above that. And.
With 13,000 gallons of water?
Please don't yell. Thank you.
It's water that, once the pond's filled, it's there. Nothing's going to be drawn upon those ponds. There, there are ponds on, on the adjacent properties, there's a pond, a portion of it on, on this property as well. Like I said, once, once this, once this pond is full, it's full. The water level is going to stay where it is. We don't anticipate any impact whatsoever on, on a joint of wells. Because if the wells are drawing from the deeper, from a point deeper than what our pond actually is, up to 100 feet deeper according to the testimony given here, then it's really not an opportunity for this pond to impact water that's 100 feet below.
And what is the depth of the existing pond?
It's, it's only about eight to 10 feet, only eight to 10 feet.
So the existing is eight to 10, the proposed would be 16 to 20?
Correct.
Any other comments or questions from audience members? And if you could just state your name for the record.
Sure. Richard Cody, 105 Lover's Lane. My concern is with the gravel, 83,000 cubic yards of ground. That breaks down to about 4,150 trucks. And that's a lot of traffic if you're going down a residential road, especially heavy trucks. Because even at 20, even at 20 yards in a truck, that puts you right at the weight limit of Connecticut. The roads vary now. If he can, if he can arrange with ONG transportation out that way, that makes a big difference. But right now, Lover's Lane's not wide enough for that kind of traffic. And when he's saying 15 loads a day, I've been in construction for 40 years. It's not going to be 15 trucks a day running out of there. I do it every day.